This meeting of the Board of Tyler ISD is called to order. We do have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. And this is a special call meeting with pretty much one agenda item, which is a bond discussion. And so we do have a presentation and we're looking forward to seeing it.
It's on, okay. I'm using it down here. Mr. Washman, trustees, thank you for giving us this opportunity to provide this presentation to you. This, this special call meeting will be recorded for perpetuity purposes, for, for the public to go back and view over time as well. So we are presenting a, the work that we have been doing as a school system in regard to a potential bond election that y'all could consider calling here within the next couple of days to address the, the needs at Hubbard Middle School and early college high school. Certainly completing a, a 20-year transformation of school facilities that has been fairly successful and sponsored by the taxpayers of Tyler ISD with a lot of comparability spread throughout the school system. And we hope today we'll present this to you so that you'll have a better understanding about what the district has been working on. Marty Crawford Superintendent, obviously, and with me tonight, Tim Loper, Director of Facilities, who has actually been here since the first one. We also have Tasha Bjork over here. It's been our CFO since the first initiative was, was presented in front of the public and successfully passed. And we also have Kristi Anton and Ron Jones that are Assistant Deputy Superintendents that, that could answer questions, but more than likely the questions will come from, and answers will come from myself or Mr. Loper or Mrs. Bjork. Let's go ahead and get on with the presentation. You do have something in front of you that is the current presentation. First, a little bit about our school system, just as a refresher. Eighteen thousand, one hundred forty-seven students. That's a pretty good number right there. You know, this, this time a year ago, we were at seventeen seven, seventeen five, somewhere in there. And I think this number right here represents the, the public's trust, our parents' trust in our, in our campuses. When so many of our peer districts across the state have lost enrollment, Tyler ISD is actually kissing the pandemic, pre-pandemic enrollment number of eighteen thousand, two hundred. We're very appreciative of our parents and most importantly, we're appreciative of our teachers on our campuses, along with their leadership and the principals and their support staff for making it a welcoming environment for our, our parents to send their kids back to us. These are recent snapshot data from the fall P E M submission to the Texas Education Agency. Seventy-eight percent economically disadvantaged, ninety-six percent graduation rate. That's our latest graduation rate. They, they're still tidying up some of those numbers, but this is from a year ago, I guess, or two years ago. Twenty-four percent English language learners represented here. And then there's our demographics down there at the bottom. Twenty-seven percent African-American, forty-seven, or excuse me, forty-eight percent Hispanic, twenty-one percent white, four and a half percent Asian or other as well. Pretty consistent there over the last few years in regard to those demographics. They've, they've stayed steady, not, not much of a spike one way or the other. A little bit more about our students. Pardon the fit of this, but Tyler, y'all know this, that we outperform our peers in AP exams in seventeen out of twenty-three of those exams taken. We've had a hundred, one hundred, excuse me, AP Scholar Awards earned, over almost three thousand dual credit courses passed, and eight thousand, four hundred fifty-four college credit hours earned. That was this last year. And very proud of those numbers when you start talking about the things we've been able to accomplish here academically that has matched this transformation of our facilities, especially here in the very recent years. What's not up here is the eight-year project we've been working on to try to stave off low-performing schools across our school system. And very proud to, you know, gone from eleven and ten to nine to three to two to, to zero. And then we've got one that we're working on right now. So we think that that's, that's transpired over time and hopefully the public trusts us in regard to that. Fifteen hundred students currently enrolled that go through the Career Technology Center that was actually part of the 2013 bond that's providing dividends to our workforce and our college-going students daily. Very appreciative of that from the taxpayers. You know, a hundred and three licensers and certifications awarded to last year's students. Very proud of that as well. About our staff, we were listed as one of America's best in-state employers in Forbes of 2021. That's a pretty cool thing right there. Third-largest employer in Smith County, behind the two hospitals. We kind of trade off between us and Train. Twenty-eight percent of our teachers have a master's degree. That's actually, I think, an increase since 2017. I think we had twenty-seven percent at that time. Is that right? Oh, was it? Okay. That's awesome. And then there's our total staff right there. And remember now, staff is not always an example, an example of full-time equivalent staff. A lot of that's part-timers as well. So really, full-time staff, I believe it's around twenty-five-hundred. And then you add some part-timers in there as well. Custodial staff, food service, et cetera, that don't cost you a full-time equivalent. Twenty-eight schools, eight support facilities, everything from Mike Carter Field to Rose Stadium to some administrative night. And then there's the square footage of our facilities. Since we actually rebuilt the high schools here, that we just wrapped up that 2017 bond, we added a, a few square, square feet of actually brick-and-mortar facilities, not portable facilities, over three, almost a million, three-point-six million square feet of facilities here. You know, again, all supported by our taxpayers. We're very appreciative of that. Love this stat right here. We drive one hun, one-point-six million miles a year driven by our buses. The daily average is seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight. I think the last time we did this, that's Seattle to Miami and maybe halfway back, I believe. So that's a long way every day that we're driving our buses for our kiddos. Very proud of our transportation department. Over two million school lunches served annually, over eight-hundred-thousand breakfasts, breakfasts served annually, and we average two-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-three volunteers per year in a normal year. Obviously, the last couple of years have been abnormal and we, we've been, we've been back, we're starting to see those volunteers get back in our schools. Here's our financial facts. We're so proud of our superior first and A rating with the state of Texas for nineteen consecutive years, thanks to Mrs. Bjork and her department, along with some other accolades up there. We're rated double As for standards and pours, double A plus from, from Fitch as far as our bond ratings go. That's very important. That's a, that's a exemplary rating for the bonds. Our operating budget's over almost a hundred and seventy million per year, managing quite a bit of money and extra funding right now as well on top of that. What are some of our key initiatives that y'all have been working on, the public knows about, targeted early literacy development? We're still fighting that fight every day. Post-secondary career preparedness and credentialing. Y'all get frequent reports on how well our CCMR is performing. Again, a lot of that due to early college high school and the, the Career Tech Center. Our advanced academics outcomes are some of the most competitive in the state for a district that looks like us and it's our size. We're very proud of those. And then school choice. Let's not forget about our Pathfinder initiatives that we've had going on here now for over five years to, to get some school choice. So we've got a robust transfer program across the school system that, that we're very proud of as well, not just on the specialized campus, campuses, everything from a fine arts academy to a, to Spanish immersion school as well. So when you start talking about a bond election, y'all are experienced veteran leaders in this community, so I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. We, it's basically asking the community if they will support the school system taking out a mortgage to build a brick-and-mortar facility for, for our students and our teachers. We get funded in two buckets. The maintenance and operations fund is over here, that's one revenue stream that we have. The other revenue stream that we have is the debt service side to where you take those mortgages and, and put those to use like we have the last almost twenty years. In that maintenance and operations side of things, approximately eighty-five percent of that is spent on people. Everybody from the custodians to the teachers, to the, to the coaches, to bus drivers, to superintendent of schools, to food service, to, to obviously all of our teachers and our principals. They're paid about eighty-five percent that comes out of that. The other fifteen percent is discretionary funding, whether it be gasoline to put inside of our school buses, electricity to keep the lights on, the water running, all the utilities you can think of, and, you know, buying basketballs, buying pencils, buying pens, technology. That all comes out of the maintenance and operations as well. The other side is done for debt service. We could, we could pay for things like buses out of that and doing other, other maintenance projects, but we don't do that. Three cents of that other side is actually dedicated to preventative maintenance, so that we're not calling bond elections to redo roofs, to redo HVAC systems, et cetera. Y'all know this. We don't do that. The debt service side is where we actually go and ask for, for new brick-and-mortar facilities once they have been deemed maybe outdated or, or they have spent their life cycle as far as a facility goes. So we're very, very proud to do that, that we don't take on debt to things that depreciate once they roll off the lot like a school bus does for technology. And again, voters must approve these funds through an actual called election. We are on timeline right now to be able to do that within the next week or so. So let's talk about Hubbard. Hubbard Middle School is, is, is the remaining campus of a 20-year transformation plan that was begun by this school system nearly twenty-plus years ago. There was actually a plan that was developed and it started with the elementaries first all the way up to the middle schools and then to the high schools. We kind of got ahead of ourselves and actually left one campus remaining at Hubbard and actually got the high schools done. We're very proud of those and very thankful for those, but Hubbard does remain one of the campuses that's, if not the campus, that's untouched. It's located on its current site, designed to exact specifications as the other middle schools, this plan is. So when you start talking about the square footage, it's the same as the 2013 model schools that we have. It's, the finishes are similar, the programs are similar. And so we, we didn't leave anything out that we didn't already put into Moore, Bolter, and Three Lakes. And in typical Tyler ISD fashion, when we can, we rebuild our schools on-site. We try not to buy new property. We have before, but again, when needed, but it, to save the taxpayer dollars and to be as efficient and good stewardess as we possibly can, we try to do it on-site. The components would be a one-thousand-two-hundred-student capacity to match the other three 2013 models that we have out there. That would give us more than enough capacity across our school system at forty-eight-hundred student capacity inside the new facilities. And right now, we carry about three-thousand-eight-hundred middle school students district-wide. We also have a couple of specialized programs that takes care of some of that enrollment at Caldwell Fine Arts Academy and Verbal Dual Language School that goes K through eight at both of those schools respectively. Twenty-first century instructional classrooms. We'll talk about that as far as another facility goes here in a minute. Obviously, modern safety and security features that we've programmed in and all of our fairly new build programs or schools at the last twenty years. Improved traffic flow in designated parking areas. And then obviously, with any new builds, the, the city has to stamp it. Is that correct? Okay. To make sure it meets energy and building codes, ADA, TEA. We take care of the TEA and the U I L requirements, but we want to make sure that, that ADA is met along with all the building codes as well. So here is an actual rendering of what potentially could be the new Hubbard Middle School. It's a three-story facility and we have a video that we would like to play for you right now to show what could happen if successful. I'll kind of talk over this as we go through it. Copeland Road to the South, if you're familiar with this part of Tyler, and we all are, you'll see a three-story facility sprout up from where the current practice football field and practice track is located. There's your improved circulation around the site. That facility will actually face, face Copeland Road and Rose Redmond Park. This being done while school is still in session, the same way we did it for Bolter and for, for Moore as well. There's the building right there, was built in the, built in the sixties with other buildings added during the nineteen eighties. You'll see that we'll use that space. The proposal is to use that space right there to actually put in a standard middle school football field and six- or seven-lane track, whatever fits right there, that would match the, the same that we have in our 2013 model middle schools as we have there. Certainly a new gymnasium there with adequate parking for not just athletic facilities, but the staff. This is probably a little bit more than we're going to be able to do on campus right there. We, we do always provide courtyards at our camp and, but right here is just what an example could look like as we go forward. And there is another rendering there. The birds are not included in this bond election. We're proud of our partnership with our architects, Corrigan and Fitzpatrick. Y'all know Corrigan designed Legacy and, and the CT Center, and Fitzpatrick designed Tyler High. Very proud of that and Bolter. And you can see that they both have had their hands on, on this design here and very proud of that as well. As you look at this rendering, before we actually see some other renderings of what it could look like on the inside, excuse me, very similar to the, the other middle schools to where you have that one main entry right there that's a controlled entry. Obviously, you've got to have other doors that egress out of there for fire code and evacuation purposes, but a very controlled vestibule there in the front with the, most of your office space there to your right, whether it be your registrar, your attendance clerk, your principal offices. A neat part of this design and things that we've learned since the 2013 models is actually have an assistant and administrator's office on each floor. We programmed those into the Tyler High and the Tyler Legacy Project, and that's been a, a pretty good hit as far as being able to get to an administrator, for whatever reason, during the day. And we've programmed that out here as well, not just encapsulated everything in that one area like we have at other camps. Same square footage for the media center, similar to the 2013 model middle schools that we built, thanks to the taxpayers again. And certainly, we are very proud of this. Don't get distracted by the graphics in the pep rally look there. We love our Huskies there at Hubbard, but again, that will be something that we'll work on there. Architects love taking liberty to, to do some of this and we love them, but that's certainly something that could, that could be, this is what, you know, the media center could look like. Hubbard, certainly right now, if you're familiar with that campus and its cafeteria arrangement that it has right now, along with its kitchen, is limited. Who's over here? And, and certainly, we love that campus, but at the same time, it does not meet the same standards as our 2013 models. And we would have a cafeteria in similar size as, this one reminds me more of probably Moore, possibly. Yeah.
Will there be a kitchen?
It will have a kitchen.
Good.
We, we like kitchens. We, we build kitchens whenever we build new schools. Except for CT Center, which we'll talk about here in a minute. Okay. Zing. So right here, we've got the, the actual entryway there, very similar to what's, you know, reminds me a little bit of Tyler High and, and also maybe of Bolter, that, that three-story span right when you walk in, Moore as well. So they've done a good job with this in regard to giving it a nice little entryway. Again, there's, there's some entry seating there and then right there to the right, you see the cafetarium. So excited about this for the Hubbard students, you know, if approved, that area right there has access to all the fine arts band hall, the coral room, the orchestra room as well, with the black box theater for theater as well for the, for the, for the theater arts. And then right there with all connections to backstage so that they could actually host their own performances, much like our 2013 models are as well. Gym space, certainly doesn't look like the old Hoosiers Gym that we have there now, but certainly this is comparable to the other three brand-new, or not new, but fairly new middle schools that we have. So hallways, you need wide hallways for, and you need, you need hallways that aren't just going to make you feel tight. Here's a rendering here of some collaboration spaces that are pretty flexible, give students enough room for circulation as opposed to kind of the model that we have right now. As you will notice in this picture, there are no green lockers as currently sits in, in Hubbard Middle School, so. But we'd have sprinkled a lot of orange in here and certainly nothing that's pumpkin orange, but staying the same theme as our other middle schools with some type of school spirit as far as our paint swatches go. We'll roll through these if you don't mind, or would you want to take, how do you want to, would you prefer me to go and ask, answer questions about Hubbard right now or after?
Does anybody have any questions about Hubbard? I think if nobody has anything just right off the top of their head, then we can roll through.
Okay.
And then at the end, if we have questions.
Maybe jot your questions down about each project. Well, let's flip over to the early college high school bond components. We've always known we could go out east in expansion at the, at the Career Technology Center, increase the student capacity to serve that campus to up to five hundred students. Twenty-first century instructional classrooms, very collegiate-minded as you'll see in some of these renderings here that, that they currently do not have. Cafeteria here to be shared with the CT students. Right now, we have to hustle our kiddos back from the CT Center for breakfast and lunch. We do it very effective and very safe way with our transportation department, very proud of them, but it does cause some logistical concerns for our comprehensive campuses to get those kiddos back and, and, and fed. And so that is one thing we will be programming here. Certainly, modern safety and security features, dedicated parking areas, and then meter exceeds all energy building codes and other standards, whether it be from the state or local here as far as our building codes go in Tyler. Here's a rendering of this project and we have another video to show you in regard to a potential, what it could look like as we go, go along. There's the big yard. The district purchased this property for the 2013 bond and actually, we're going to go east of that and you'll see, you'll see the, the campus spring up there, a two-story facility, again with controlled entrance for security purposes. That, that square on the left over there that's next to the CT Center is a, is actually the, the servary and the dining area as well. A little lecture area right there as well that we really don't have at the CT Center that could be used by CT Center and early college high school as well. And again, there's another rendering right there that our architects provided for us. Man, they do a good job. Again, a very collegiate feel in regard to the spaces that are here. There's those, what they call learning stairs over here, a little lecture area, and then underneath that, some, some breakout pods that we're seeing across early college and, and career tech campuses across the state. There's a little peek into a classroom in there. We wanted to have some of these, obviously, for supervision purposes, we, whenever you let students go out here and work on a project together in some of these spaces, these team spaces, you want to be able to supervise those kids at the same time if you're providing a direct lecture. So we really think that that's a pretty cool concept that our architects came up with. There's a look down the back hallway and you can see the lights to the swimming, the aquatic center to the left over there to give you a better perspective of what that would look like. And these others, these spaces that you've got here are not just, just for collaboration purposes. We're, we're giving them some freedom in regard to being able to eat and do things like that, a little bit more responsibility as an, as a young college-going adult that is programmed into this building. And y'all may not know this about our early college high school. This is a fairly recent announcement that we're very proud of. It was rated as the top high school in East Texas by U S News and World Report, eighty-second out of nearly fif, or over fifteen-hundred high schools in the state. And then we start talking about nationally, it's like in the top two percent. So, you know, at five-hundred-and-thirty-second out of almost eighteen thousand high schools nationwide. It's an A-rated campus that graduates approximately eighty to ninety kiddos a year with their associate's degree prior to their high school diploma. Y'all know that. It, it saves upwards of, at, at the, at the minimum, about thirty thousand dollars worth of college debt for a kid to go through this program. Most of them first-time college goers that, you know, our kids tend to stay here. And so this is actually pumping more college credentialing into our community as we look for the, you know, sixty percent of our population to have post-secondary certifications by the year 2030. We think that this facility matches the academic performance that early college has been pumping Some of the compliance things that we're talking about in here, obviously with the ADA, the MEP, the mechanical, electrical, and the fire sprinklers, window replacements, HVAC replacement, just great things that are also being added as, as, as an essential element of this. You may ask about Stewart. Stewart, where early college is currently housed, remember that early college high school and Rise Academy share that same facility. Those programs, colloquially speaking, don't really gee-haw together. They're, they're, they're not the same students. They don't have the same aspirations. You have one section of students that is college-going, you have the other student that is focused on graduating, getting to the workforce as, as, as certainly as quickly as possible, that may not be quite as effective in a comprehensive setting. Both programs have been extremely successful. The plan is for Rise to move to the refurbished part of Stewart, AT Stewart School, that this board spent about four million dollars on a renovation and refurbishing back in 2016. And then early college, if successful, can actually move up the hill to a new facility. So we'll continue to use AT Stewart School very effectively for Rise and let them have some elbow room actually and can grow as well. You may ask about HOG. Community may ask about HOG, knowing that, that this has not been brought up for this. Not many people in the community realize that HOG Middle School is going to be one-hundred years old in eight years. It really is, it really does limit us in a twenty-first century educational environment. We teach the heck out of them. They love going to school there, but if our goal is to put kids and a, and teaching staff in quality instructional and learning environments, it's pretty difficult to, to get there in the, in the current condition and maybe in the future. The second bullet there talks about that the, the current building is in relationship to our other 2013 model schools are a third the size of what they are. The property there is also a third the size of the property it has for, that we have for, for our comprehensive middle schools. And so that's one reason with, you know, you, you talk about if you were to try to mimic what we already have there, it probably wouldn't fit in that part of town as either. We are committed to, however, to preserving and maintaining the historical integrity of that building. HOG's not going anywhere and we certainly could use that facility for some elbow room, for some administrative offices. We've got some folks that are officing on top of each other as well as community and student extracurricular programming. But as far as a comprehensive school goes, it's certainly getting to the point to where it's starting to wind down. It, its enrollment is about two-hundred-and-seventy kids. We've already reduced the programming that's there, so because the participation numbers are not there. And that is one thing that we're really concerned about is making sure that we can get the, the students that go to school there, the opportunities and the access to the, the robust programming we can provide at a comprehensive middle school like we have so far. We would eventually assign students to zone schools. We, we know how to do that. We did a major rezoning in 2018, correct? Yeah. And so it would be a pretty easy shift there to use Front Street because we've gone to direct feeders for our high schools. So Front Street over to, to Beckham and then over sixty-four, which is known as, as, I guess, Fifth Street. And that's kind of our boundary there. You would actually take that zone, which is cut in half, and distribute those students to current schools to where they're already going to school with their elementary peers anyway. So if you think about, if you think south of Front Street, you've got a lot of kiddos that already go to elementary school with Andy Wood students, Bell students as well. North of Front Street, you've got a lot of kids that are going to school with Austin and Bonner students as well. So those would be distributed to the appropriate middle school over time. High school attendance zones, just so we're very clear, we are not adjusting those. I've got a little quip that says we have not identified a third or fourth grade student that's going to be the next Heisman Trophy winner. And we're not trying to gerrymander them to go to one high school or the other to win a state championship. And if we were doing that, we're doing a terrible job of that because we haven't won a state championship in football here since 1994 and 2004. So we're not messing with that. And there's a little bit of noise out there about that chirping going on that I want to be very clear that we are not adjusting high school attendance zones, unless y'all tell me to. Here's our proposed bond projects. Eighty-nine million dollars will be the total package. Thirty-seven and a half million is what we spent to build Three Lakes. And as you can see, sixty-three $37.5 million is what we spent to build Three Lakes, and as you can see, $63 million there is the proposal for Hubbard. It's the same square footage, same programming, similar finishes. Am I leaving anything out? No. And costs are escalating. There's no doubt that in just eight years, that is a pretty shocking number, but certainly understanding the economy with what we have now, we are, this is where we're at. You know, if you start thinking about the bond service that you might have to, and as far as your interest rates go as well, it was announced, I think, earlier this month, or late last month, that the Fed's talking about interest rates possibly being escalated four to seven times in this fiscal. We think now is the time to strike on, in regard to this, even though that number is concerning to all of us. That is something that we're, that we're proposing. Early college high school will be about 60,000 square feet of work for $26 million, and then that's our package there. It's our current tax information. Obviously, that's a very important part of what we're talking about. There's your maintenance and operations side of this. At one point, we used to claim the eighth lowest out of 10 school systems in Smith County as far as taxes go, but the state came and compressed tax rates and did a variance on different, different-sized communities, different-sized school systems, so that really is not as relevant now. We know our interest in seeking from our debt service is pretty competitive when you start talking about the 10 school systems in Smith County. You know what's interesting about that, that number, the .335, that's actually the number that we had before we raised the tax rate three cents for the high schools. So, in four years, we've actually been able to reduce the tax rate back down to what it was, thanks to, obviously, a lot of commercial property has been built here in Tyler over the last few years, and some rooftops as well. We're committed to continue to knock the INS rate down, and certainly, the state's going to do what it can do as far as compressing the tax rate on the MNO side, but the INS rate, we're projecting that once the tax rate, the bond is called, we can actually knock it down another penny, and we think we can knock it down another penny in perpetuity almost, is what we're thinking. Y'all have received earlier, or late last year, from Dusty Trailer with RBC Advisors, what our tax situation looks like, so we're in very good shape on that. Tasha's done a great job over the years of managing that. $0 tax rate increase, we're not going to increase the tax rate, I want to make sure that we're clear about that. This is going to be done within the current tax rate, and again, a penny coming off of it even this coming August, for y'all to consider, we can afford to do that. And then for voters 65 and up, their taxes are frozen. If they've done what they're supposed to do with the county appraisal district, along with disabled veterans, could be exempt as well. So, we want to make sure that we're very clear about that. That's been, they've been very supportive of us during this initiative over the last 20 years, we want to make sure that they know that we're not adjusting their taxes. Here's some voting information here, kind of a calendar of early voting. As you go through there, obviously, we don't vote on Sundays in Smith County, but some entities do, but Monday through Saturday that first week, and then May 2nd, 3rd, the second week, polls close, and then you actually have a possible election day on May 7th. That's our presentation. What questions can Tim and I and Tasha answer for y'all?
Okay, thank you for the presentation, a lot of good information there. Does anybody on the board have any questions about either school, or the bond process or building process?
I have a couple of comments. I think that, especially with Hubbard, I feel like the, I just had two takeaways basically from your, from your presentation, and one was with Hubbard, kind of fulfilling a commitment that we made years ago about updating facilities. It seems like we're down to the end, and I remember being with you in 2017 when we were, went and told the staff that they weren't going to be on the next bond, that it was going to be the high schools, and they weren't very happy and kind of upset and disappointed, so I see this as kind of fulfilling, fulfilling a commitment that we made. With early college, I think that, you know, that's a campus that makes transformational change with the families and students that go to school there, and I think that this shows our dedication to that and our commitment to that, with the high school that is exceeding all, at least for me, all the expectations that I ever had with it. So, I for one am super excited about this, committed to seeing it through and doing whatever I can to help pass this bond.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Dr. Crawford?
I agree with what Mr. Martinez says. Hubbard has been kind of, okay, we'll get to you later, we'll get to you later, we'll get to you later, and now it's time, it's time to do something for Hubbard, and to bring it up to the same standard as the rest of the schools, I think it's imperative that we do that at this time.
Okay.
Just to piggyback off of that as well, being a graduate of Hubbard, and my mom was a graduate of Hubbard, my sisters were graduates of Hubbard, and now I have a son at Hubbard. Walking into that school, it is definitely a, you don't get the same feel as you go into Moore and all the new middle schools. So, I am so proud of what the community did before in voting for the previous bond, and I hope our community comes out and does the same thing for these two really fabulous buildings that are about to be beneficial for our students and staff.
Okay. I agree, I think it puts a little bit of a bow on what we've been doing, not only facility-wise, but programming-wise, and feeder pattern-wise. There was a time when our middle school feeder patterns were split, it was really hard for high school coaches to even get down into the middle schools and teach a certain style or scheme, and what this was essentially do, if I'm hearing you right, is Legacy would add Hubbard and Three Lakes, and then Moore and Bolter would feed into Tyler High, and you wouldn't have a split hog zone anymore.
That's correct. We, if we do have a kid that wants to play or participate in something outside of the programming there at HOG, they kind of get zoned to their, that cluster.
Okay.
So, they have some somewhat assignment to the high school feeder pattern already, athletically and maybe even other extracurriculars as well.
Okay.
But this would actually, you know, clean that up a little bit.
Okay, well, good deal, and, yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Also, a key thing that I know that people would be, will be interested in is that it will not increase the tax rate.
Absolutely.
So, we shouldn't increase tax rate because of the bond.
Right, and I'm happy about that, and I'm really excited about the opportunity after this to continue to knock that down if we can do it. I know that's important to the community. And I do remember Mr. Trailer, the last presentation he gave, I think the number was $30 million that we've kind of retired, or saved in retiring debt early.
Saved about $59 million.
Saved about $59 million by being aggressive and paying these things off, so I want the community to know that it is important to us to knock this stuff out early, and the timing, like you said, with interest rates about to, who knows where they're going to go. I do, I do think the timing is right for this, so. Anyway, does anybody else have any comments or questions? I think we have a opportunity for public comments right now.
Mr. Chair, personally, I feel like it's definitely time. I was very elated when we started redoing the schools within our Tyler area because they were definitely behind, outdated, was not maintaining them by any means, so I've agreed with everything that we've done thus far. I did have an opportunity to visit Hubbard campus, which I hadn't been on internally and walked through it. I was very disappointed in the appearance of the campus. I think it's definitely time for us to improve that as well. I think that we are moving, have moved in the right direction in regards to it. I'm pleased with the design. I think that the only concern that some people had was that it did look more modern than the other ones, which is fine, the times change, long as the, and I think you addressed the square footage, it's very similar in each one of the middle schools, which is good. Just because the design is different doesn't mean that they don't have the same size building. I am appreciative of the aspect of the assistants and the assistant administrators and the assistant principals being on each floor. I think that that's something that we definitely need to build in our new schools because of the concerns that we have with laudering on the floors, et cetera. So, I think that it's a well-designed building, I like it, I think it's definitely time for it to be improved, so I think it should go forward.
Just one comment on the design. You know, if you think about Moore, and if you think about Bolter and Three Lakes, those are all designed differently, they really are, and so I think that what they call mid-century modern, kind of a throwback, kind of fits in that part of the world, for my, my lack of understanding of architectural knowledge and whatnot. So, in saying that, I understand that there might be some concerns about that, but again, the programming and the square footage is certainly comparable, and that has been the thing that we've gone, this journey we've gone is comparability across the city.
Yeah, and you know, you mentioned that all three middle schools that we've recently redone over the last several years, they all have their own identity because they are different, and you know, this was discussed even in 2017 with our high schools, you know, even though the programming within the walls is the same, because we approved exactly the same programming that we had at, you know, at Moore, Three Lakes, and Bolter into Hubbard, doesn't mean that the exterior has to be exactly the same, and I think it gives them a really good identity with the commercial buildings that are around it also on the loop, so I'm pleased with it.
Yeah, it's funny you kind of bring that hearken back to the high school bond. People that sat on that dice told us they did not want Tyler High to look like Legacy, and they did not want Legacy to look like Tyler High.
I know.
I know. So, in saying that, I think the portfolio, the diversity in the portfolio there, characteristics as well, but thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for understanding the programming.
Oh, yeah. The other thing is the square footage been the same, but could Mr. Loper address the cost difference between then and now?
Yeah. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, well, we're hoping that we can get these projects in early, but back in June, when the board approved the design, that's going to put us way ahead as far as getting started sooner, because we believe, if successful, we can actually start turning dirt in June because we'll have 100% drawings in April. So, with the team sitting behind me, we've been reviewing those, we've, our architects have issued plans to several different general contractors to get estimates, and we're seeing a huge increase in everything, from, as we all know, I mean, we're all seeing increases in the grocery store and everything, but from supply chain issues to just natural inflation and escalation on products, it's, it's up to from 60 to 74% increase. It's hard to believe, but we don't feel like they're going to go the other way, and so we, we think it's time, we think it's time to strike.
You know, the last time they went the other way was kind of a fluke deal, we had a once-in-100-year recession, and I don't think we want to pray that that happens to anybody, so that would be the only thing, you know, there are some other risks involved between now and when we actually go to bid. Geopolitical issues, we knew that back in, when we, when we bid the Tyler High and the Legacy projects. All it takes is somebody with a microphone saying the word tariff, and all of a sudden, prices went like that. So, in saying that, we're very aware of some of this stuff, we think that we've built in our, enough contingencies in here for any type of surprises and curveballs that might get thrown at us.
Well, thank you, and yes, we do have an opportunity for public comment, and if anybody in the public has any thoughts on this, then you're more than welcome to come to the podium. Don't see anybody out there raising their hands.
There's two.
I do see two people from the public.
Want to come up?
Maybe want to come in? Now, you have to limit your comments to this presentation, I will have you know that, so no discussion about any other things. No daddy-daughter date nights, no nothing like that, okay? Okay, well, hearing no public comment then, we will, are we going into executive session? No, there will be no executive session tonight and no action coming out of it, so I'll go ahead now and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.